Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wasburg Area School District where we are a student center and future focus in our world-class education. The board work session of May 9th, 2022 is now called order. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vicki, will you please have a roll call?
Mrs. Burlingham?
Here.
Mrs. Farrell?
Here.
Mrs. Heatherington?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Mattson?
Here.
Mr. Morve?
Present.
Dr. Pushcheck?
Here.
Mr. Blazer?
Present.
Mrs. Pound?
Thank you. The chair recognizes superintendent of schools, Mr. Ken Berlin, for school reports. Will we have school reports next week?
Yeah, we're gonna have some school reports about some of the successes of the high school students and the recent, drawing a blank, what did they do? Science only, that's right. So, we're gonna showcase some of their accomplishments.
Great, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is guest instances and comments. Do we have anybody sign up to speak today? No? Anybody here to speak? Or we pass you over? Okay. The next, the chair recognizes Mr. Ken Berlin for a superintendent's report.
Hey, thank, thank you, Mr. President. We're gonna start with Brian Lee. He's the executive director of the Wasburg Area School District Foundation, and he would just like to give us an update on some of the activities of the foundation.
Appreciate your time this evening. Is this raised? All right, I just have to lean over and apologize.
There's a crank there. Although it might be made for elementary students, I don't know. They're not going anywhere. They were already maxed out.
Nope. All right. We'll go with it. So, like Mr. Blunt stated, I just wanted to kind of come by this evening, see if I can give you a little bit of an update from when we took over the foundation, what we did in our first year, and try to give everybody a bit of an idea of what we're trying to look forward to doing. So that way, as you hear things that may be going on at the school, you can let us know what, what else we can do to help. So there's always more that we can try to do, and the more people that we get, the more we can do. So, the foundation actually ended up being inactive for just a number of years. So, when we decided to kind of take this back on, I had a nice group of folks with me. We went ahead and contacted some of the prior board members to get the documentation in place. Thank you, Mr. Blazer, for all your help with that. From there, we kind of absorbed some of the social media platforms as well as email addresses. That way, we could kind of start doing some more communication and push everything through. Then we went ahead and developed a little bit of a strategic plan just to get us back rolling, put our name out there, let everybody know we're back inactive again. We have a couple of things that we can work on, and then we came up with an organizational structure that we hoped that would benefit the entire district. So, as we got that open, we started to do the next big hurdle, which was get our 501(c)(3) back inactive. So, we put all a whole bunch of paperwork together, sent it out to the IRS, because that was about as clear as mud to try and get that back together. Took a quick bit of time, but finally, in July of 2020, we got a letter back that we finally got our 501(c)(3) back inactive. So, we are now able to do a lot of fundraising in a lot of different pieces for our teachers and the students and the community as a whole. So with that reactivated 501(c)(3) status, last year, we awarded two scholarships, one to a senior, one to an individual who's gonna be attending a, like a, not quite a secondary, like a trade school, so that we have somebody that will go to college, somebody that'll go to a trade. And we awarded two mini-grants, one to Mrs. Shores at the elementary center, one to Ms. Garcia at the middle school. Still looking for a third one to be able to award. We'll try to do three a year, one for each of the schools. So that way, if they have a particular project that might kind of elevate or enhance the students' experience, we want to be able to help assist them and keep making sure there's some different pieces that we can put together and place on that. We then got some licensing in place so that we could do fundraising, so a small game of chance license. That way, we can do some 50/50 raffles, make a little bit of money so that we can keep replenishing ourselves as we are able to award some of these scholarships and mini-grants. So we did launch our first fundraiser, and that one, we ended up collecting about $800 last year. We're hoping that this year, we can do a little bit more, see where we can go from there. We did also work with a lot of the folks at school to do some grant writing in the last year. So there's a couple of pieces that we were trying to help facilitate. We did do maintenance for, I think it was about two sessions worth of grants, to try to get some additional funding in. We didn't end up getting those, but we are still keeping the process alive and looking for more places that we can put the grant money to use and also see what we can do to help find some additional funding to push forward some school agendas that maybe are on the outliers that we can't quite do yet. So, our hope is, as you hear anything along those lines, please feel free to reach out to myself or anybody on the board and let us know so we can try to help align some of those pieces. And then we also helped with a donation. So the last year, we did the slogan project here at the school. So we had one of the folks, I think it was Lauren Frye, reach out, and she asked if we would be willing and able to help. So we did provide a little bit of help and support on that as well. I'm hoping as we get our feet wet and kind of keep moving, we can do a lot more of the projects like that, so we can keep moving the entire school forward. With that being said, this year, what we're working on is trying to expand some of our collaboration. So, we've been in talks with the folks that are on PTO, some of the folks who maybe are working with boosters. We found that we tend to all have the same licensing to do small games or chants. We should be able to, if I read the instructions correctly, be able to share the licensing amongst each other. So instead of each of us having to pay a separate fee, we can all utilize the same license and kind of help each other out that way. So I'm looking for a lot of different areas where we have that crossover, that we can help each other out. Like I said, this year, we're hoping to award three scholarships. The two that we offered last year, again, one for a trade school, one for a collegiate person. And then there was a great fundraising effort towards the end of last school season from some children who wanted to donate money in memoriam of the Zimmer family. So they turned the money over to us. We have it open currently and are accepting any nominations, and I believe we're doing essays for folks who are interested in trying to obtain that $300 scholarship this year. So we have a great community around us, and it was great to see two children be the one that stepped up and donated $300 to do a scholarship, was great. We're also hoping to do the three mini-grants this year, again, one for the high school, middle, and elementary. And the fundraiser that they were hoping to do is go out and do a nice event, maybe end of the school year, beginning of summer type of events at the adventure zone. Have been in contact with them currently, trying to get that all lined up so that we can get some documentation to get sent home and have a great little event there. I think it's a great spot for our area, and I would love to see everybody in the entire school just come out and have fun. One of the things that we're really trying to focus on this year is Erie Gives Day. We've got a great new member on our board who happens to serve as the executive director at the nonprofit partnership. So we're hoping to leverage all of her brain power and all of her experience to really move us forward in that direction. And so one of the things that we're looking for is to have projects that might be coming down the pipeline that we could use as a way to kick that project off. Well, it would be great to just have people donate because they love the school district is one thing, but it'd also be helpful if we had a nice project that we can really elaborate on and show what that value is gonna be for the entire community. I think that will help us move the Erie Gives project a little closer to some additional goals that we've got there. So that is my presentation in a nutshell. I want to thank you all again, and say you guys are doing a great job also through the entire pandemic and all the work that I know has gotten put in here. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
I just wanted to take a few minutes to give a little more perspective on what puts pressure on public school budgets. So I did a little fact digging, and this is a historical slide. And you can see that the local tax, I mean, this just isn't our district. This is all 500 school districts. But you can see since 1993-94, the local effort has grown, while the state effort in the green has decreased. And that's pretty significant, that it just keeps opening up. So that's, that's an overall stressor financially on every school district. The impact of that, of course, is basic ed funding, and we actually now are ranked 45th in the United States on state support for education. It used to be over 50%, but over the years, other legislative priorities have kind of chipped away at that funding. So that puts a lot of pressure, again, on the local tax property home. So, we talk about funded and unfunded mandates in education. Every time there's a bill passed in the PA Assembly, there's agreement between the House and the Senate in PA, and a bill, you know, a bill is born. It has an impact on whether or not it's funded. So, like the charter school, for example, this, they decided to create a second school system in Pennsylvania of charter schools funded out of public money. So we're now running two separate school systems out of the same pot of money. Well, you can't do that and add 300 charter schools in Pennsylvania without more money. So, it's been slowly putting pressure on public schools to pay rising tuition to charter schools. So the big one, the elephant here, though, is the pension. I have a slide I'll show you in a minute. And then special ed costs, we have, we have no say in that. Those are services that we legally must provide. So you can see, in that same time, in that same decade, right, this is how much they increased basic ed funding and funding for special ed, and this is how much the laws they passed actually required the schools to pay. So, when you, when you, when Kurt Sonny or somebody's, you know, one of our local reps stands up and said, hey, we balanced the budget with no tax raise, that's completely false. They forced you to raise taxes because they didn't do what they needed to do with their money. This is a historical slide, and again, it shows the decline in special ed costs from '07, '08 to '21, '22. And you can see, over here, at the time, federal and state kicked in 41% of this blue bar. Well, notice, this hasn't done anything. It's, it's the same, and this is what we're now spending. Now, this is, you know, all school districts, not just Wasburg. But over here, it's 25% that we get from the federal and state government for our mandated special ed costs. So that's pretty, pretty breathtaking. Essentially, again, the local property owner has picked up that, those expenses. And then just to, you know, just to really draw, draw things to a conclusion, you can see, I think there was supposed to be a server here, but pensions and charter, I mean, look at this, 533% growth in 10 years. All kind of businesses, that type of expense growth. So again, nothing to be concerned. Now, the good news is, I mean, you know, we're doing our job. We're keeping salaries reasonable. Our other expenses aren't climbing, you know, we're dealing with inflation, and other purchased services are nothing. Over a 10-year period, for some, they only grow 5%. It's unbelievable. But that also is contributing to the teacher shortage because the salaries aren't keeping up with inflation. So this is just a snapshot of what happened with the pension, and this is the state funding for the pension fund. And so you can see, at one point, when the economy was booming before 9/11, the retirement system for schoolteachers and school employees was flush with cash. And then, then of course, this was the great recession, created doubt. And then, this year, the pension system's only funded 61%. In other words, we, if we had to pay out everyone's pension right now, it's gonna be 40% short. Your check's gonna feel a little bit light. But that's, that's why our, our costs and pension contribution are going up, and this actuary table, you know, shows where we're gonna be theoretically in 2030. Of course, I don't know if there might be other economic pressures that slow that down. So as, as enrollment growth in charters has leveled off, the problem is the tuition keeps rising because the tuition is based off of each school district's budget. And as everyone's budget goes up, tuition costs go up. So a cyber school, which really just needs a computer and a platform, and a handful of teachers organizing program, that once upon a time, they might have got $3,000 a student. Well, now it's up to 14,000. It's up to 24,000 for a special ed student in Wasburg, the school district. Of course, it varies a little bit from district to district, but the net impact is the tuition is growing while the enrollment is not growing very fast. So, that's just a little, little background, because I know we're gonna be, we're in budget season here, and I, I wanted to drive home the point that a lot of this is out of our control, and I think we've been pretty responsible with our taxpayer dollars here. The things we can control, we're trying to control, and we've been very successful at that in the areas of salary, trying to keep healthcare down by increasing health deductibles for employees, those kind of things. So that's just a short little snippet of background on school finances in Pennsylvania right now. And that's all I have.
Are there any questions from the board, from Mr. Berlin regarding his report? I just had two questions. One, when you showed the growth in special ed costs, you know, and certainly not keeping up with our federal contributions, so what causes that sort of meteor rise in special ed costs? Like, is it just the salaries of the staff required? Or is there anything to point to that causes that particular area to grow?
So, so special ed started in, in the 70s. Before, before the special ed law was passed, students were not really adequately serving that population of students. You know, they were in small closets in the basement, they were segregated, and that led to a lot of legal action, which resulted in Congress responding by passing the IDEA law, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So as that system has grown, more and more students are being identified as needing special services, and rightly so. People are, you know, people have become more sensitized to some of these specialized needs. So certainly, the population of special ed students is growing because of a new knowledge in the field and more identification of students.
So a higher percentage in a decade of them.
Right. And then, you know, and of course, there's just, special ed is, is the most litigated area of public education. So every time a case law comes down, you know, like, we're in the 3rd federal district court. If something comes down in, in a 3rd federal district court, and it doesn't jive with something, say, in the 6th federal district court, then the Supreme Court gets involved and/or Congress updates IDEA to resolve whatever the issue was with that court case. So then it might dictate how, how and what type of services need to be provided. You know, an example might be transportation. There was a recent case where parents felt that there was a private school that had a program that could serve their special needs child better, but only for part of the day, and they wanted them bused, to be bused there. Now, that, that went in favor of the school district, but that's an example of the types of cases that come up, just, I mean, and that's just one teeny example. You can imagine, if it went, went the other way, you know, now we're, we'd all be busing more students to private schools. And at some point, you know, there's only so many buses, so many hours in a day, but those are, they all come together to drive those costs.
The previous data points you had given us to look at, like, how we're doing academically, and part of that was tied to, like, budget, we were spending, you know, instead of zero on curriculum and IT, we greatly increased there. But I know, like, a dollar amount spent by district per student seems to be like a number that gets drawn out a lot. Does that mean anything to you? Like, is it, should we be looking at what we're spending per, per student versus what Fort LeBeuf is or Hill Creek? Like, is that really a good measuring stick?
Well, every district has a different demographic. So, you know, there's districts like Union City that might, they might spend more per pupil, but that's related to maybe a higher percentage of special needs population. And that would certainly be the case in, in Erie School District. They, you know, they have, they typically have a higher, you know, per capita special ed count than, than we would here, a higher percentage, right? So, that number's good to look at, but at the end of the day, you have to spend what you have to spend to educate your students, right? I mean, the good news, though, is we're, we're in the average zone. We were in the, we were below average before in spending, and we were way below in performance. So now, we've crept up to where we're spending average in Erie County, and we're starting to move out of the bottom into the top tier. Despite the article in the newspaper, which, this is unfortunate, and Becca has put some data together, and we'll, we'll look at that during the curriculum section of the meeting.
I was gonna ask about that, so I'm glad that you brought that up.
Yeah, and, well, I won't steal her thunder, but, you know, it's funny. A month ago, I found the school digger report, and it showed us 161 out of 500 school districts. So it comes down to the methodology that they use, and what are they meant in? So Becca did some research, make a point to some of what resulted in that result.
Great. The chair recognizes Mrs. Vicki Vending, the business administrator, for her report. Ms. Vending?
Thank you, Mr. Blitzer, for this evening, the treasurer's reports, cash in the bank for a general fund as of April 30th, 2022, In the capital projects account, there's $1,346,561.22. That is the bond proceeds as we're using for the tech school renovations. And the cafeteria account, as of April 30th, $506,020.87. The bill is for this evening, Exhibit A1, checks written since the last board meeting, And I'd like to point out that a large chunk of that was the Durham busing, that they didn't submit their invoice timely for the last board meeting, but couldn't wait long, too long to, to pay it. So it was written already with, for your consideration this evening. Exhibit B1, cafeteria checks already written, $295.96. And then the Seneca High School Activity Fund currently has $78,165.41 in that account. And the rest of the reports will be ready for next week's meeting. That's all I had for tonight.
Are there any questions from the board, from Mrs. Vending? Hearing none, those items will be on our agenda for next week for your consideration. Thank you, Mrs. Vending. There are two items under legal advisement for our consideration next week. LA1, which is for the appointment of the school district labor council for the 2022, I think I was supposed to say 2023, the school year.
Yep.
And that's to appoint Mark Kuharbik from McDonald Village. And then LA2 is our appointment of school district solicitor for the same next fiscal year, to appoint the former cox of McLaughlin Gornall Senate with Attorney McTorre serving, continuing to serve as our district solicitor. Are there any questions on those items? Hearing none, they'll be on our agenda next week for consideration. Chair recognizes Mr. Steve Morve for finance.
Mr. President, there will be six items currently on the agenda for next week. First one will be some budgetary transfers, item F1, for the report that Mrs. Vending will prepare. The next item would be F2, to elect the treasurer for the 22-23 fiscal year, as noted. Also, F3 would be the designation of the depository for 2022 to 2023 as well, with Northwest Savings Bank. F4 would be appoint a current delinquent per capita tax collector, which would be Burkhymmer, which I think that we've used them in the past. That would be for 22-23 as well. F5 would be the adoption of the proposed general budget, to approve the proposed budget, as noted in the prepared budget that has been distributed out for everyone to review. And then the final board, or the final adoption would be in the June 20th board meeting, at the Wasburg School District Board Meeting. That'll be F5. And then item number F6 would be the ESAR grants. Approve those, as noted, listed there in the bullet points. Those will be the six items currently on the agenda for next week under finance. Mr. President?
Thank you. Are there any questions on the items or discussion under finance? Hearing none, those items will be on our agenda for next week. Thank you, Mr. Morve.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Mr. Shawn Mattson for building the grounds. Mr. Mattson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item to signature for the next meeting. Under buildings and grounds, B1, the high school auditorium sound lighting project, following high school auditorium upgrades for the lighting and the curtains, and the sound stuff upgrades. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the item under building and grounds?
Mr. President, I have a couple, a couple questions.
Sure, Mr. Morve.
These are the items that are under the Co-Stars?
Program?
Yes. Contractors?
Yep.
Okay. I just wondered, given the size of them, whether that makes any difference? That there's, I know there's time and expense, et cetera, involved in actually bidding these out. I mean, I know personally Pittsburgh Stage, I know those folks. Okay. And then Horizon, you know, I don't know if there's any other, you know, for another 180-some thousand dollars worth of work, is that worth trying to bid out as well? It's just, it's a general question for me. And I know there's expense in, in advertising, there's expense in preparing the bids and all of that rigmarole. I know all about that. But I just wondered if, given that, you know, over $600,000 worth of work, whether that makes sense? And I know Co-Stars sometimes is supposed to be the better deal. I just don't know if there's been any sort of comparison, you know, to, to go down that road. I'm, I'm just asking a general question.
Yeah, we didn't do any research into that.
Okay.
I mean, it's been our, it's been our experience that if we can go Co-Stars, we end up with what we want at a reasonable price.
Okay.
When you, when you RFP something like that, you don't know who's gonna come out of the woodwork.
True.
And give you a low number, and they do a poor installation.
Right.
We've had that happen to us before.
And that's all in function of how the scope of work is written, so that everybody's bidding the same amount, or the same scope of work, et cetera, so that you, you know, that's supposed to level that playing field. But I know that always is.
Yeah, that's a good point, Mr. Morve. You know, a good example would be all the problems we had with just trying to get a contractor to plow the, the parking lots here. We went through three years of misery because a low bidder came in, just lowballed everybody, and then, and then we eventually had to do a lot of documentation to show that that what, they weren't a qualified bidder, and we were able to, to rebid the job.
Right.
And get a capable contractor.
Understood. I know, I just, you know, given sometimes where these, and they're not sole source. I know that, you know, Pittsburgh Stage is one, or Horizon is one. So I would imagine there's other, you know, companies that do this type of work, whether it's stage work or stage lighting work. And, you know, the competition just has, there is some value to it. But I also know that who's low on bid day is not always low at the end of the job. So, I know that you don't always get best value, and that's what we're looking for, is best value.
Well, and, and that's another advantage. The price that we pay is, is the price that, that they say we pay is the price we pay.
Correct.
And in a, in a bid job, there's.
There's always that stuff, yeah. No, I, I get it, I get it. Okay, it just helps me understand the process, so.
Any other questions?
Do you have reservation on one of them being what you've just been through?
Well, I, I know Pittsburgh Stage has given us some trouble in the past. That's all.
They tailor more to schools.
And they do. Pittsburgh Stage is a, they are a square.
That's why they're on Co-Stars.
Contractor, I would say. There's, there's other stage companies out there, but they're much higher level, which obviously would equate to higher cost. much higher level, which obviously would equate to higher cost. They just will.
That's why they're not on Co-Stars.
That's why, I'm sure that's true. I'm sure that's true. That's why I was asking.
Sure.
And, and again, for, for value purposes, you know, obviously value is a function of initial cost, plus lifetime cost, plus maintenance, plus all those things. And that's, that's fine. Horizon, I'm not familiar with. I just, I just don't know that. I know other companies.
Twenty thousand foot, Steve, twenty thousand foot.
Oh, absolutely. That's, that's where I'm at. I'm at 25,000. But I'm also at, I'm also at 600,000 bucks. So at 25, at 20,000 feet, $600,000 looks pretty small.
Pretty small.
All excellent questions.
But at the ground level, 600,000, a big number.
Yeah, some lights and curtains.
For some lights and curtains. Yeah. So that's all. I'm just, again, understanding the process, and best value all the way around is obviously what we're looking for.
Any other questions? Hearing none, those items, that item will be on our agenda for next week for consideration.
Sorry, Mr. Mattson.
The Chair recognizes Ms. McCallie for Personnel. Ms. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Under Personnel for next week, I have eight items. And to go through them, it'll be P1, Kelly Substitute Editions, if we have any. P2, appointments as listed. P3, resignations as listed. P4, any leave requests as listed. P5, summer remediation appointments as listed. P6, kindergarten boot camp, to approve kindergarten boot camp for, looks like August of this upcoming year. P7, conference request, currently Mrs. Smiley to attend Spring Science of Reading as listed. And P8, summer help, to approve summer help as follows. And I'm assuming that there might be names in here for next week? Yes, okay. That's what I have.
Are there any questions from the Board for Personnel? The only question I had was about the, sorry, somebody was asking a question?
Tara.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Tara.
Go ahead, Tara.
What's kindergarten?
It's kindergarten boot camp every year. Or is that something?
I can't answer that. But it's, it's new this year as a result of the ESAR funds, and that's how we're, we're able to pay for it this year. And it's also written into the grant for next year to help with the learning loss as it relates to COVID. So those funds had to be used for some type of summer remediation program, and the state allowed us to use that for students that are going to be entering kindergarten.
The only question I had was about the Assistant Pandemic Coordinator. So is that the same position that the Health Department gave us extra funds to create higher? And so will we replace, or is those funds running out, or are we out of COVID?
Those are all good questions.
Depends who we've talked to.
Let's check the crystal ball, shall we?
Yeah, yeah. So, first of all, the funds didn't run out. We could have funded that position through the end of June. But this person is resigning for personal reasons. I'm not sure what they are. Probably that has something to do with it. So then we were, we were going around, if we need this position, and our numbers are so low. But then the hook from the Health Department is that if you want a second year of this position, you have to transition them more to doing social work and outreach for the Health Department. And we already have, I mean, we have contracts through Sarah Reed that provide us those services. So it almost seems like redundancy to us when we toss it around. I haven't totally closed the window on that, though. If we need to repick that up, or who knows, if we get an uptick, maybe they would allow a person to function in that contact tracing role again.
Is there a window that is allowed to be dark, or?
So, by June 30th, they're gonna want these contracts if we want a second year.
Is there any other?
So, you're saying that her position would change to more of a social work for the next year?
Right.
Does she know that? She resigned. I know, but did she know that before she resigned?
No. She did know. And we, we called her, but she wouldn't return our calls.
Yeah, I was more curious about the position, and if we were gonna continue having a pandemic coordinator or not.
I mean, I could tell you that that day, there was 38 contact-traced kids at the high school. So...
It wasn't a great day.
It was just up at the end of the day, she just sent a very simple letter, but it may have not been a very good day.
Sure. Okay. Well, those items will be on our agenda for next week. The Chair recognizes Mrs. Amanda Farrell for Policy. Ms. Farrell?
I have no items, Mr. President.
Mrs. Farrell? The Chair recognizes Dr. Andy Pushak for Curriculum. Dr. Pushak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Four items for the Board's consideration next week. The approval of academic services for a hospitalized Williams student. Each year, we approve the seniors who meet the graduation requirements. C3, textbooks for the high school as listed. And C4, a homebound instruction approval for Williams for next week, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion on the items under Curriculum?
And then whatever Becca Kelly can add to our curriculum discussion today.
Mrs. Kelly?
It's very exciting to have a school board actually discuss curriculum and instruction. So we're expecting big things.
Well, and I love data. So I did try and pare it down. I can dig much deeper. If there's any questions after this, I can go back and find some additional information. But this is resulting from the article that was in the Erie Times News, and the information they received was from the US News and World Report. Those rankings are what they used. So to kind of start us off, to explain algorithms, if you look at Google and Amazon, you know, their purposes are two very different. One's giving information, one's selling a product. So their algorithms are a little different based on what they're trying to provide to their population. When it comes to school rankings, those articles or those publishers are really looking at their readers and basing those algorithms on what they can sell to their readers, right? So just kind of keep that in mind as we're moving through. There are multiple sites that provide school rankings. I threw a couple up here, some you may be familiar with. Niche is one. Public School Review, which I will say ranks Seneca in the top 30% of high schools in the state. School Digger, US News, obviously in the Pittsburgh Business Times. So US News uses six indicators, and you can see there, this is directly from their website. College readiness takes up 30% of the ranking. College curriculum breadth, 10%. State assessment proficiency is 20%. So you can see just within these two initial pieces, 40% make up that college readiness score. And those points are multiplied for students who earn a qualifying score. So within each of those sections, students are multiplied three times more if they receive a passing score. Additional indicators, again, state, state assessment performance. In this case, it's the difference between how students performed on the state assessment compared to what US News thinks they should have performed. So they look at the economically disadvantaged, they look at your ethnicity, and they have their own algorithm to determine whether or not you performed as well as you should have performed based on, on your demographic. Underserved, underserved student performance is ranked 10%, and your graduation rate also ranks at 10%. I also want to draw some attention to the, the year. So you can see the graduation cohort, the information was taken from the 2020 graduation cohort. And if I go back here, data was taken from the 1920 school year. So it's not, it's, we're two years behind in the data they used to classify to make their ranking. Which 1920 was the COVID year. That's the year we shut down. Data sources, again, from US News. They do use third-party data sources, with the exception of how they decide to, how well you should perform. That's their own algorithm. They use the Common Core of data, I'm sorry. They, they use the US Department of Education's website. You can see they use statewide math reading and science assessment test data, which for the high school would be our keystones. They use the College Board website, which is where we're able to obtain how our students perform on SAT and AP exams. And they also use the International Baccalaureate website, which I don't believe we have student data on that website.
No, we don't participate in the IB. You have to adopt their curriculum to, to use international baccalaureate.
So the flaws, and I'll, I'll highlight or illustrate the flaws here as we move forward. But the flaws immediately that stand out for me is that it does not take other dual enrollment options into account. For example, we do offer RCI courses to our students. They don't, they don't take any of those courses into account, or how students perform on those courses. It simply heavily weights the AP exams. Being a small district, we're only able to offer so many. We have a small student enrollment, and so only so many students are even interested in taking those AP exams. It also determines where we should perform based on statistics. It doesn't take into account where we're located. We're a rural district, so not all students are, you know, intend to go to college. It doesn't take into account any type of career interest, the technical, you know, vocational and technical achievements, our per student expenditures, our academic growth, or our teacher, student ratio. So going back to, you know, Jeremy's question, as far as our, our cost per student, you know, it's one piece of a very large pie of information that as administration, we really need to take into account to determine how well our district as a whole is performing. So looking at the enrollment, I kind of broke it down into our AP enrollment, which is the total number of courses our students are enrolled in. The students that are enrolled and the courses. So, for example, in the 1617 school year, we had 42 students that were enrolled in 72 courses. So you have students who are enrolled in two, three, sometimes four different courses. The total number of courses our students were enrolled in in 1617 were eight. So remember, we were on a block schedule, so we may have offered four AP courses in the fall, and then four more AP courses in the spring. You can see through the years that that number has declined. So we went from 72 overall enrollments with 42 students to, currently we're at 36 overall enrollments with, involving 28 students. And we're down to six courses. Because if we don't have enough students to make up a class, and we do offer, you know, three, four students, we are opening a section so that we can provide that course to the students. RCI enrollment, you can see, has increased substantially. So in the 1617 school year, we offer, we had 31 enrollments, taken up by 11 students, 16 courses. In the 2122 school year, we now have 128 enrollments, and 37 students make up that enrollment count.
Can you remind us what RCI is?
It's the Regional Choice Initiative.
So these students are taking college courses while they're in high school.
And getting credit.
And getting credit. And it's only, it's only like $300 a course. So...
It's awesome.
Yeah, they, I mean, half, some of these students, they can walk out of here with most of the freshman year knocked out, or at least a lot of the general.
And you're saying there's students that might be in AP, but instead, this is a better option for them?
We're not taking the AP.
Yeah, so we're, we don't, that Pittsburgh rank, or what was that Pittsburgh ranking?
The top, the top 20%, the peer review, the Pennsylvania school?
The bad one that was in the paper.
Oh, US News.
US News, yeah. So we didn't get any credit for all those, for all those college-bound kids that are taking college courses, because we only had a handful of kids in the AP class. And they're looking at, also, they look at who took, who took the AP class. Because not every student that takes the AP classes wants to take the, the exam.
And I have that data as well. Because for an AP, in order to receive AP credit, you have to take the exam, you have to receive a passing score. In the RCI enrollment, you only need to pass the course. And so that's, that's one roadblock. Another roadblock is RCI, as you can see, even back in 1617, we could have 16 students enrolled in 16 different courses. And, and that works because we're part of the consortium across Erie County, whereas, again, we're kind of limited in what we're able to offer in-house. And then I included VOTEC only because I was kind of curious if, if those numbers have shifted at all. And they seem to have stayed fairly consistent across the, across the years. So here we are with the assessment data. You can see our high school enrollment is slowly declining. So in 1617, we're at 44. And I have additional data that I could dig into, but again, for the sake of this, I just tried to take some snapshots. Our AP enrollment, you can see, is declining again. Here's the number of students. So out of 103 students, again, for example, in 1617, we had 27 students that decided to take the AP exam. That's 26% of that student population. In 1920, again, I think, I believe that was the last year of our block schedule. So we would have had students take the AP exam the first semester. We would not have had any students take the AP exam second semester because we were closed. And this is the year that US News used to report our statistics. And 2021, 19, 19 tests were taken. So that was 35%. So of the students taking AP exams, that number is increasing. It just, it doesn't look like it's necessarily increasing, but percentage-wise, the percentage of students is increasing. We, here's the number of students that have passed. And then you can see below that, the percent passed is the number of students who took the assessment and passed it. And I want to draw your attention to the percentage at the very bottom. So I went through and looked at the courses that we've offered that constituted these, the percent passed assessments, and looked at what our average was overall in those assessments versus what the national average was. So our students are performing on average higher on those AP exams than students are nationally. And so I thought that was an interesting statistic. The percent of high school population taking the AP course, courses, so overall, what percentage of our student population is taking an AP exam, you can see that is declining, obviously, because our RCI enrollment's increasing. And the percent of high school students overall that are passing an AP exam, and that would be a score of three or higher, has increased. If you look at, you know, in 1617, we're at 3.5%. Now we're at 4.5%. Again, we don't get credit for any of that. I then looked at our Keystone proficiency by year. So how we're ranked in the state is our 11th grade cohort, as it, you know, as it moves, as it passes through that 11th grade year, those scores get banked. And then, in 11th grade, their best scores, they take a snapshot, and that ranks our overall proficiency. So when we're saying that we're above the state average, we're looking at that 11th grade cohort and where they're performing in 11th grade. This initial snapshot is looking at the year that they took the test. How well are our students performing overall? Because that's important, too. That's the first time going through, how well are our students performing. And I included a trend line. I know, I apologize, because the percentages might be a little hard to see. But our blue is our algebra trending up. Our orange is our English trending up. And our gray is our biology, which unfortunately is trending down, and we're aware of that. Mr. Miller, this year, when we met, his administrative goal, one of them, was to focus on biology. So he has been, you know, working with the Biology Department on those scores. We're looking at resources and things, because we see that, you know, as an overall weakness. And then this is our cohort, this is our Keystone proficiency by cohort. So again, that 11th grade snapshot, how are we performing? Now, because we're a small school, there are certain years now, because of COVID, that we do not have any data, or enough data that they've identified what our proficiency rate is. So in 2019, that cohort, you can see the blue is the state average, and the, the white here is Seneca's average. So we're well above the state average. Algebra, we did have enough students take the test to have scores. And so even in the 2021 school year, after our shutdown, you can see, overall, the state went down. We did go down a little bit as well, but we're still well above what our state average is in our performance.
And that's probably a big, I speculate, but our kids were in school most of the time. We didn't do massive shutdowns.
Yeah. So another piece of the puzzle, again, is student growth. So we know students perform and grow at varying rates, and not everyone's gonna hit. When we talk about level of proficiency, we're saying, here's the high jump. How many of our students, or what percentage of our students can get over that jump, right? When we look at growth, we're saying, okay, we know you started here. How much higher can... can you jump? Where can we raise that bar? Because we know not every student's going to automatically be able to get over that benchmark. And so that's where our growth measures come into play. So if you look at our growth for two thousand and twenty-one, and because we've been doing CVTs consistently now, we also have CBT growth data. And so let me come back here. Blue and light blue and green are all good. Dark blue shows significant evidence that we exceeded the growth standard. Light blue, moderate evidence, and greens shows that there's evidence that we've met the growth standard. So our students are growing.
So, and I, I could do a whole presentation on how they make those calculations. But in a nutshell, there's a system, it's called PBOSS that the, that the state uses and it analyzes all the standardized test data that they have on a student. So every PSSA, every Keystone that a student takes, it, that those scores are put into the, the PBOSS database. And then they have some proprietary statistical formulas, which they guard very closely. But they use all of that data to project where that student's going. So every, every year, when you get a new, you know, a new set of scores, if, if it doesn't ma, if it's below the, the projection, you're going to be like yellow or red. And if it.
Even if they have no actual evidence.
Well, yeah, they had, they're saying like, okay, this year, Johnny, your PD, your, we predicted your PSSA score was going to be this, this was going to be your proficiency level. Our statistics that used your previous third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, your ninth grade score, your eighth grade score, based on those other scores should be this, but you came in under it, so you get a negative growth mark. And then it's the opposite way if a student exceeds that predicted line based off of test history and to what degree, we can see that they're, they're growing, they're learning faster than, than would be expected.
Yeah, and if students don't have that historical data, then PBOSS does not give us a prediction for them. They have to have, so third grade, there's no predictive scores because there's no previous PSSA assessments. PBOSS does not start until fourth grade. So here's our math. You can see we're either meets, above, or well above. And it's broken down, I had it broken down by student group. So you have all of our students and how they performed on Keystone's and CDT's, then you have our economically disadvantaged because we, we do want to look at those subgroups and how they're performing. You have the lowest performing thirty-three percent, which again, takes in that economically disadvantaged with other demographic information. The lowest performing thirty-three percent and students with IEPs and how they performed. And then our, our white side group is listed as well. So it kind of gives us a full picture of the different segments of our population and how are they performing overall? Are we meeting their needs? Are they growing? So they might not be hitting that benchmark or that level of proficiency, but we know that they're outperforming what those algorithms say they're supposed to perform.
And if you, the charts I put in the weekly update, that's why that dot is moving up.
Because it takes into this.
Yeah, because we've been, we've been refining our curriculum, making sure that the teachers are teaching the critical skills needed as for these assessments. And, and that's why we're starting, you know, it's like turning that Titanic. It takes a while, but we're starting to see that upward growth.
Yeah, and I apologize again, this is a little small, this is literature. And the reason there's more lines is because it looks at our CDT scores for ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade because we give them the CDT's each of those years. So that not only can we see how well they'll perform on our Keystone assessments, but we also want to start digging a little more into our SAT scores, AP scores, things like that for students that are wanting to go into college, ensuring that we're doing our due diligence to prepare them as well. And you, again, you can see all greens, blues, and dark blues. Biology, we have some greens and blues, but again, we have work to do in this area. And this, this has been an area of focus for us. So it's not a surprise because we look at the stat as soon as we get it and see where they're performing.
This is Kelly.
Yes.
Does this also reflect that we do ELA in math from third grade to the twelfth grade for assessments where biology will, we're starting, and I know we do science as well.
Right. But biology is strictly biology information, yeah. And there, there, I mean, there are some things that, you know, I've uncovered and in working with Mr. Miller, there's some, there's definitely some cleaning and refining that we can do. So it's, it's a very solvable problem.
Why isn't specifically biology and not science like?
So that was changed, yeah, that was changed several years ago. There used to be eleventh grade PSSAs that focused just on reading, math, and science, and it was more general. At some point, the state decided that it would be more beneficial to have subject-specific assessments. And at the time, the plan was to incorporate social studies as well as additional science assessments. But like everything that costs money and I think, you know, under, once we realize how much it was going to cost.
Yeah, we, we, we saw, we, we watched the whole plan unravel when they realized, and we had predicted it, all of us in education, like, they're not going to be able to afford to administer that many tests and score that many tests for that different kid. The PSSA act was probably a better instrument because the science test did have a portion of chemistry and it did have a portion of physics, a portion of, right, you know, so you're taking broad sampling. Same thing with the PSSA math exam. They focused it down to algebra, but it, it used to encompass algebra one, algebra two, geometry, and even a little bit of pre-trick concepts. So they, they thought it was going to buoy, I guess, specific performance in these specific areas and overall that would create a better prepared workforce. I mean, that was some of the, the commentary that was going around when they passed, you know, the legislation to move to Keystone.
I know with some of the colleges too, like, being a non-traditional student currently, human biology in the colleges is one of those classes that you have to get in and take almost right away when you are entering. And I think that's a very difficult course. So I feel like preparing them to be able to, to pass at, at that level, because there's, I just remember going through, I mean, I, I survived it the first time, but I barely felt like I survived it. But I just feel like I wasn't prepared necessarily for that. And so students probably should be because.
Well, and then because the Keystone's are allegedly going to be a requirement for graduation, schools have narrowed their focus. So we have students that sometimes have to take biology again if they, if they don't get a passing score in a Keystone. And the effect of that, and I've argued, you know, I've argued this to our esteemed Pennsylvania legislators, that it's really narrowed the curriculum and it's, biology is squeezing out physics, it's squeezing out chemistry because the kids end up getting, you know, three credits of biology or four, two or three credits of biology and it squeezes time out of their schedule for physics and chemistry, which, I mean, I, I would argue those are probably more practical sciences for everyday life.
Like for my chemistry major, yes.
Yes, for everyday life, yeah, so.
Becca, do you know, like, digging into the data, is there, is there certain concepts in biology that we're just, you know, we have more students that don't understand? Is that how you like recommend curriculum changes or what, what do we do to improve?
So what I've seen work in previous districts is, is spreading that content out a little more across two years because it is so heavy. And so trying to get it all into one year, it's, it's really just too much. So it's realigning it so that some of the concepts are covered in ninth grade and then those concepts are reviewed in tenth grade, but students already have a really good handle on it and so you're able to get in more of that information. It's also looking at the assessment anchors and ensuring that what is listed in the assessments as the assessment anchors are aligned with our resources. And so that not only are we teaching, but we're assessing what the test is going to assess. And sometimes there's a disconnect there. Once we have those, that, that train rail essentially in place, then we can start looking at our assessment results and it gives us strength and weaknesses profiles. So we can see, okay, even though we know we cover this during a certain time span, we're not spending enough time or our assessment isn't as in tune with what there's, the students are going to be assessed with on the state assessment and we can start tweaking in, in those areas. So it's, it's kind of a process of just kind of starting big and then reeling, you know, reeling it down to the, the gritty.
Is there any chance of the reverse this and not make biology a priority, but just like science in general?
Well.
It seems really, really unfair that we have to like change everything we're doing to meet this.
Well, and, and some of the same things happen in math, you know? A student, a student might need to take an algebra class again for remediation purposes so they can try to pass the Keystone and graduate, but that might, that might knock geometry out. And I mean, I, of the math courses that I took, I've found geometry and, and algebra to be the most useful. You know, I built a pole barn and I was using geometry and all those kinds, and form, basic formulas, solve for x, you know, this is what the rafter length has to be, that kind of thing. But they have been talking about making the Keystone, well, this has been, when did this start? Probably two thousand and ten, I think they said the Keystone's were going to be a requirement to graduate. And every year, they've extended it for some reason. So now it's not supposed to be in play with a hard stop until next year. But I would bet, and I, I'd feel comfortable betting that they'll look at the scores and go, oh, COVID made the scores low, we're going to have to extend this for another year. So it might, and as, as, as the PDE initiatives go, you know, they, they come in flurries like this, they last for eight or nine years and then the next new idea comes along to remodel curriculum.
And I do want to point out, the greens are where it's actually the biology Keystone, right? Where you're seeing the reds and the yellows are the results on the CDT's. So what, how I interpret that is, you know, our students that did have that interruption with COVID did not grow as predicted on the CDT's. However, within the Keystone's, they're still performing, you know, at or above where, where the state expects them to perform. So, and that's some tweaking that we'll do as well as we move along.
And I know we talk, ABC's a lot, but CDT is just a little reminder, that stands for classroom diagnostic test. So those are benchmark tests that we give periodically and they're aligned with the Keystone and the PSSA curriculum, so.
Gives us a quick temperature check.
Yeah, like where, where are they at as we march towards test time?
And as a biologist, because it's next to a chemist. In my studies of science preparation and sequences in schools is simply alphabetical order for no other reason. That's why you take biology first, chemistry next, physics last. Seriously, that has been well documented by experts in the field that we should be doing a lot more chemistry and physics way before we get to, because that will help you with anatomy, physiology, structure and function and all those things, so.
Does that make sense?
Don't feel like you're left out. It's not any other big deal than alphabetical order.
And, and I know everyone saw the edicts or idex graphs that, that Ken provided, so I, I didn't share those again. But I did want to show, this is SchoolDigger. And so our ranking in two thousand and seventeen was two hundred, or three hundred and sixty-nine. Our ranking as of two thousand and twenty-two is now a hundred and sixty-one. So of all the districts in our area, we've moved the most vertically. We've moved up two hundred and eight positions, so.
And that doesn't have the college prep waiting in it.
Right.
That's based on the hard PDE data, assessment data.
Seven, well, and there's like seven districts, six districts that are in the top one hundred in our county.
What is, what is SchoolDigger?
So SchoolDigger is a place where parents who are thinking of moving to a new location can go online and find out what the cost per pupil is, what the student-teacher ratio is, their performance, the, you know, student performance. I think it might even have like the median home cost or median home price. So it's just another ranking system like NESH and Pittsburgh Business Times.
Like a third-party independent?
Yeah.
And they just use hard data and.
Put stuff together.
There's no formulas or fancy ways of manipulating the data.
Yeah.
How up to date is this too?
So this is two thousand and twenty-two. This was our current years, which uses last year's information. Excuse me. I'd have to go onto the site exactly to find. Oh, come on.
And Erie City, it's ranked so low there, I mean, that's counting them with Collegiate, which was another great shining star, them pulling that district up as far as it will go.
Yes. So next steps, I mean, it's really to stay the course. Continue to assess our curriculum, our resources, ensure that they're aligned with what we're being assessed on from the state. Our focus within the district comprehensive plan was, you know, really honing in on that economically disadvantaged subgroup because that's where we noticed several of our weaknesses. We want to increase our proficiency at the high school with the career benchmark standards. And career benchmark standards really looks at the spectrum of opportunities we want to provide for our students after graduation. We know not everyone can afford or is interested in going to college. We don't want one article to, to, you know, keep us from supporting our students in areas that we know they can be successful in after graduation. We want to continue to analyze data across the district to ensure that our students continue to grow and achieve. And continue discussions regarding the RCI versus other dual enrollment options. You know, it does get a little challenging at the high school, having so many of our students go off campus for those RCI credits. And so one of the things that we're looking at now is are there opportunities to, to keep those students in-house by offering other dual enrollment opportunities that aren't the AP route where they have to, to take this scary exam at the end. And what we're finding too is less and less colleges are accepting those AP credits. And, and that can be very frustrating after, after the time and effort. That's it.
Good report.
Yes, thank you.
That was excellent.
Yes, Derek.
I know that you showed the rankings as well as the college information, but when I had the graph that we had, we asked you, you showed Wattsburg, you know, in two thousand and seventeen, and then we are today, you can see that same thing, you know, the, the class was like, sorry, here. But that.
So, yeah, we, we can put that together for you.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Right. You understand what she's asking.
She wanted to know how the rest of these balls move.
You showed, you showed how Wattsburg moved, but you didn't show where, how everybody else moved in their bubble. In actuality, the, the snapshots of those two years are where those districts performed for each of those years. So if you would put those two graphs side by side, you would see where Wattsburg is in comparison to the other districts. And then if you look at the most current year, we've actually expanded our gap between the, the student, the districts that were performing below us. They, they performed even lower.
They dropped away.
Right. Compared to where we're performing. I don't have them at my, my fingertips, but if you want to wait until after we conclude the board meeting, I can pull those both up for you and show you what I mean.
Great. Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Dr. Bush.
Just to provide a historical perspective, and Mr. Berlin has done this in the state of the district over time. But if you think of two thousand and thirteen, the board at that time passed a budget that had zero dollars for curriculum and instruction, zero, big zero. For an institution that's supposed to be teaching and learning, zero for curriculum and instruction, comparable professional development amounts as well. So you can see, over time, it does take resources, it does take good people in good position, it does take the administrative team doing walkthroughs so we can see what is going on in classrooms. So that's going to be ten years next year. Ten years we've been working on incremental increases in curriculum. We're up to over three hundred thousand a year now, which still isn't enough, but to come from zero, that was the focus of those previous boards. which still isn't enough, but to come from zero, that was the focus of those previous boards, certainly wasn't teaching our kids. So over time, under this administration's direction and support from the board, we're starting to see the gains. And it is so exciting to have a board talk about curriculum and instruction and what our rankings are and how we're moving forward. So when we discussed the budget, we don't need to know the nitty gritties, we need to know this. Are we getting our bang for our buck? Is our investment paying off? At this point, it seems to be moving in that direction. So I just, I commend the board for continued support of curriculum and instruction, because that's what we're here for. Every, we have to have buildings, we have to get our kids here, we have to feed them, we understand all of that's important. But if this isn't our focus, if this isn't our primary goal and our primary responsibility to fund, to provide resources for, we need to reevaluate where we're at, so. This is a very education focused board and I appreciate everyone's willingness to approve a budget that does this to support Mrs. Kelly and her work, Mr. Berlin and his work, leading the principals. It, it's come a long way, ten years is really, it sounds like a long time, it's a short amount of time in education, we've come a long way in a short amount of time, so we do have a good district, we do want people to move here, they need to know that. And we're not going to let these little reports in the newspaper get us down, we have actual information, so thank you, Mrs. Kelly, for doing that.
Yeah, and if I can add to that, because we talk about Seneca as a building, Seneca is made up of students and they work very hard. And to have a report go out like that, that, I mean, to me, it's very frustrating because it's a very small representation of a student population that is amazing and teachers that work hard with them. Um, and so, you know, I think that too is why this information needs to go out, those students, students need to understand that they are working hard, they are part of a great school. Um, and, and their efforts are paying off as well, so.
I just have a, it's more like a clarification, just because I found it interesting, that's just the word I'm going to use. Did you say that there's an algorithm that was created to show how someone should have performed based on ethnicity?
Yes.
I just found that really interesting.
So I will, and this is, these are words directly from their website.
Okay.
So the difference between how students performed on state assessments and what US News predicted based on a school's student body, US News modeling across all fifty states and the District of Columbia indicates that the percentage of students from historically underserved subgroups defined as black students, Hispanic students, and students who are eligible for free and reduced price lunches are highly predictive of a school's reading and mass scores.
Okay, I didn't read all that, okay, I was just, it was just, I heard it, I'm like, hey. And so I wanted, so it's just, it's interesting to me, so, which a lot of that does make sense. But sometimes I just, I like to like kind of hear the specifics on that because sometimes, you know, I don't know, it was interesting to hear that, yeah.
It's, it's, it's statistically relevant for certain demographics, but not all demographics. And so we're kind of being lumped in to.
Yeah, sometimes I think it's just about wording of things, so that's why I wanted to just backtrack for a quick second.
You know, the frustrating thing is even though they're, they're using these kind of statistics, um, and gen- generalizing, the research behind the speed at which students can learn consistently shows that they're capable of growing quickly regardless of their demographic.
That is absolutely correct, yes.
Um, and, you know, so that's, to me, that's kind of silly, why, why are we looking at that because we know?
Yeah, I just wanted that, thank you.
You have assistant reporters making your judgment of all education, which they know nothing about.
Correct, and Brittany, if you want to have some fun reading, there's a body of research called ninety 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 schools, which is ninety percent poverty, ninety percent free and reduced lunch, ninety percent proficient or advanced. So it shows how, and just like Ken said, you can have student growth when you have all those other things in place.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The items that Dr. Pushak brought up will be on our agenda for next week.
Oh, thank you.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Leah Heatherington for technology, Mrs. Heatherington.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I have nothing.
Thank you, Mrs. Heatherington. Uh, Chair recognizes Mrs. Brittany Burlingham for transportation.
Um, thank you, Mr. President, I will have one item on the agenda next week and it will be um, T one, transportation request, to approve the transportation request and ramifications of field trips of last meeting as outlined.
Thank you. Are there any questions on that item? Hearing none, that will be on our agenda next week for consideration, thank you, Mrs. Burlingham.
Mr. President, I do have one other question on the transportation.
Sure.
I just wondered, has there been any other conversation or when does conversation plan to take place about busing schedules for next school year?
So, yeah, I've, I've been talking to Durham regularly. They have recruited, I think, about four drivers and they'd like to pick up another two this summer. Um, and then we should be able to put the middle school back, to put Humpty Dumpty back together.
Together again.
Yeah, that, but that's the goal, and I know they have a, they have a recruiting fair planned as well this summer. But yeah, it's, it's, it's been slow going, um, the incentive they offered helped a little bit. Uh, the problem remains though, as soon as we train these drivers and they get that CDC.
CDL.
CDL.
Their world opens, that's a good way to put it, uh, or CDL, yeah, and too much COVID. Uh, yeah, um, but you know, they, you know, they're, they're talking about retention measures. So they, they have been responsive to, you know, to my requests, hopefully we'll be able to get back, back to them. It was interesting, I don't know if anybody saw Fort LeBeuf, there was a story there, there, I mean, it's, it's everywhere. But we want to have enough drivers so that we're not driving every sub we have on any given day. And that was, that was part of the reason we went to the model we're on right now. Because that gives, doesn't give us much, it gives us maybe two, two mechanics that can hop in a bus of two people, you know? Um, so that's where we're at on that, but uh, we're working on it.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Mrs. Tara Pound for athletic and extracurricular, Mrs. Pound. Are there any questions on the items under athletic and extracurricular?
No questions, but just, uh, Tara, another question too. Do you want me to go first? Um, just, Mrs. Burl, thank you for continuing to promote music, music's near and dear to my heart, so every time I see something like this, it's, it makes me happy that we're promoting music as well, so I can't wait to see what this type of program brings forth.
And Ms. Burl worked with, with, um, Mrs. Cage to put this together, so I, I invited her to come just in case there might have been board questions about.
Can we have a quick overview of the Honor Society, Mr. President?
Ms. Burl, would you like to give us a little overview?
Um, so basically with Triumph, it is set up as an honor society based um, not solely on academic performance, but also music performance as well. Um, so students must have a two point O in their core classes and then a three point O in their music classes, they need to at least be in uh, one music class for at least one semester of school year. Um, so that would count for marching band or concert band or any of the above. Um, so it is a program that is um, sponsored by the National Association for Music Education. Um, it focuses on creating future leaders in music ed and music advocacy. Um, and what's really cool about this is it involves students grade six through twelve, it's not just a high school based one. Um, and on their academic calendar, so they have you do a fall service project, they have you do a Triumph National Service Day project. Um, you'd plan for that in December and execute it in January. And then they also have you do a music in our school's month service project. So you're doing three service projects a year, you're doing a lot of the same stuff that you would do with National Honor Society, just adding a little bit more of a music spin to it.
Thank you.
Tara, did you have a question?
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, the difference between the extracurricular club of the Music Honor Society versus the Little Gritters or the Wrestling Club.
Just, what's the difference?
Yeah, th- this is associated with ours, with the school, school program.
So this is associated with the school program, whereas Little Gritters and the Wrestling Club are not, they're a separate entity that make up, or that are made up of our students, but other students as well. We expect our coaches to manage the program.
This has nothing to do with that. If the coaches want a good program, they're going to get involved with the younger kids. But that actual Little Gritters is not a school sponsored organization, Wattsburg Wrestling Club is not a school sponsored organization. Seneca Soccer Club is not a school sponsored organization, this is a school sponsored organization, if that makes sense.
Do we expect those coaches to do that?
We, we generally, we generally advise them to get involved. They don't, they do it to varying degrees.
Mm-hmm, agreed.
Yeah.
If they want their program to exist, they need to be made them, make themselves known to the younger students that are coming up. Hey, this is what we do in our program, this is great, but it's not a long mandatory thing, right?
Because it's unaffiliated with the school.
Not affiliated with the school.
Yeah, those other clubs that have been mentioned.
Yeah, and I mean, and music is officially in the curriculum, it's.
It's in the, it's in the program's best interest to participate in those lower levels, but it's not.
Correct.
We use the club though, over and over, so kind of creates some ambiguity. The word club, the word club, it's, yeah, potentially. Okay, all right. Thank you, Mrs. Pound, those items will be on our agenda for consideration next week. Um, there's one item under miscellaneous for next week, it's M one, the non-exclusive referral affiliation with Wattsburg and the Safe Harbor Rehabreal Health. Any questions on that item under miscellaneous?
That is related to crisis services, so we can share information with them if a student's in crisis or has been placed or needs to be placed, so there, there's no monetary connection there.
Okay.
It's just a reciprocal information sharing.
Is this like a renewal of what's already been going on?
Yes.
Hearing no other questions, that item will be on our agenda for next week for consideration. Uh, for Erie County Technical School report, Mr. Morley will be reporting this.
Mr. President, yes, I'll have a report from the April board meeting, it's always a month behind our meeting. Or month prior, I should say, not behind.
Great, thank you, and Dr. Pushak for the Northwestern Meeting Unit report?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, as I reminded the board, I did not attend in April, but I did forward the April board meeting notes and report. And our next meeting is until after party.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to board correspondence and dialogue, anything from the board this evening?
I had one item that I had been bringing up with, uh, Mr. Berlin and Mrs. Bendig, uh, that I kind of wanted to see what the temperature of the rest of the board was on it, um, so, uh, I work at real estate as well as my day job and I'm very aware of, uh, other school districts have an automatic process where when a property is sold, uh, it triggers, depending on their rules and regulations for that district, an automatic, uh, potential assessment appeal. Uh, so just to use some kind of broad numbers to kind of lay the ground, or there are properties that might sell in our district for a hundred thousand, uh, and they're assessed at a hundred thousand, so they're taxed at the value, um, that they recently sold. Recently, property values have skyrocketed across the country and Erie County, uh, is not immune to that. So there are some properties that I've noticed that are being assessed, just to use, again, round numbers, not specific property, uh, that are being assessed at a hundred thousand, but recently sold for three hundred and fifty thousand. And so what happens there is that property, you could make the argument, is under assessed, it is valued, uh, much less that they're paying taxes based on what it was assessed. And the last countywide assessment we had was in two thousand and thirteen, I want to say it was like twelve or fifteen years since the previous one. And you would think they're going to do it every ten years, I talked to the assessment, uh, uh, office this afternoon, uh, there's no plans for two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, so it could be a while until there's a countywide assessment that might sort of re-level the playing field. And so, um, knowing that like Mill Creek, uh, Erie School District, can't remember which other ones, there's a couple others, Fairview. Automatically, when they see these transactions occur, and it's easy to see, it's public data that the transaction occurs, they go through the process which requires, you know, some legal work, requires going and paying a fee to the county assessment appeal office and, and then winning, uh, to get a different value, but it could equate to additional dollars, uh, into the district. And really the way to look at it is, it's a redistribution of the overall tax base so that everybody is paying their fair share. The idea today is we all pay based on our property and our property is fairly, uh, assessed by the county and so everybody pairs, pays the share proportional to what their properties were. Um, so Mr. Berlin and, and Miss Bendig both have dug into this a little bit, but I guess, you know, that was sort of on my questions and, and on my request to see what they thought about it, as well as Dr. Miss Attorney McClure about it. But I, I also wanted to see if the rest of the board thought this was worthwhile, and there's really no reason for them to pursue it, but I wanted to see what others thought, Mrs. Heatherington.
So are we in a like housing bubble that could burst and valuable houses drops after it's been reassessed?
Yeah.
And then we're stuck paying this like high premium?
Sure, sure, if I had the crystal ball to tell you that, you know, I would be, I'd sit here. But it, it is, it's possible, um, another way of looking at it, um, is that, uh, Erie has been, Erie County has been immune to housing bubbles that happen in Florida and other places, our property values are pretty flat and have not increased. In the last two years, they've increased twenty, thirty percent, so we are seeing that there, that's happening everywhere. And interest rates were extremely low last year, interest rates were as low as two point six, and right now they're like five point three. So that's going to slow down how many transactions have already occurred this year. Um, but the transactions that have occurred this year so far, we're obviously, we're still kind of early in the housing market. Um, they're happening less frequently, but they're still at twenty, thirty percent value high, a lot of houses are selling for a well over asking price. And, and I guess my point is when we see those transactions, you know, are those houses really worth that much more than they were in two thousand and thirteen?
So I talked with, um, Chris McClure and Michael Mazzone at Knox Law. Um, Mazzone, Attorney Mazzone handles, uh, these types of appeals for the Knox Law firm. So it's a pretty straightforward process, you know, Vicki King has already requested a list of the transactions.
And I have it.
And you have to, and the district would have to establish a threshold, um, for, for when uh, we would look at a property for reassessment. And the reason for that is you have to apply it equally across the board. I guess there was court cases, uh, that have established case law because some districts were just going after the big fish. Um, and then that must have resulted in litigation, so now it needs to be applied equally. And that would all be stated in a resolution that the board would have to approve. So to do this for the current school year, twenty-one, twenty-two, we would have to file these appeals by August first. So, uh, Attorney Mazzone said that the legal fees that they would charge us as a combination of the application fee and some paralegal work, and it's about two hundred dollars a parcel. And that, and that comes into play when you, when you set your threshold, uh, on, on when you're going to start looking at challenging. Uh, he said the appeals for property owners are about ninety-seven percent successful, uh, or for districts in our favor rather, he said property owners will, will rarely challenge those. It's, it's larger business and things that, that usually will mount a pretty rigorous defense. Um, so those are the facts as I understand it, I had asked Vicki to start putting together model data for this year, so you can actually look at some numbers. Um, and I, I don't know if you have that ready, but maybe next month.
I have some rough calculations already, but what happens is, is it the same? So it's on, it's based on transfer data, so wouldn't be, if you're not, if you don't sell your house, they're not going to come after you as a reassessment. It's only when a house that's assessed at a hundred thousand is sold for three hundred and fifty thousand. It's only when a house that's assessed at 100,000 is sold for 350,000 that there's that discrepancy in what it should be and what it is. So what happens is, is if you buy two property, if there's two parcels and the same people own it and they sell it to the same new owner, that sale price is listed on both parcels, but each parcel has a different assessment. So I have to go through and collect, okay. The Bendigs sold this to the Pushaks, and the Pushaks, this is together. So then you have to kind of like massage the data to make sure that the assessment and the sales price is all in one lump because it's currently split out. So it is a little bit of looking at it. I did talk to Fairview School District. Their threshold is set at $1,000. They typically have about $25,000 a year in additional tax revenue that costs them about $3,000 in legal fees. So you have to decide if.
Did you say 2500?
25,000. 25,000. So they get a bump in their revenue of about 22,000 because they've got $3,000 in expenses to get that money. Rough guesstimate, I have pulled information from May 1st of last year through April 30th of this year. And typically, that's how Fairview and Harbor Creek does it. They collect their data in May, get their appeals ready, and then submit them by August. We're looking at about an additional $100,000, rough guesstimate. So that compounds every year as properties are selling. And so it may behoove us to look at it a little bit closer for this year.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear on what, so what you're guys talking about, asking us to consider is us to use funding to file appeals to have properties reassessed that sell, or that they're, what is it? It sells more than what the property taxes are worth or what it's assessed at.
And that's, some of the districts will get how much money additional income the district will make. Some just look at the value. Some districts I've looked at in Pittsburgh will say, if this house is sold at 100,000 or less, you don't really care even if it's a discrepancy because these are not, you know, wealthy or high-income properties. So the parameters of how and when you decide to kind of press that trigger button can be different for different areas.
And like the end goal of that is if we're having these reassessed and relooked at, that it would eventually make things maybe come down or have costs be cheaper or something. Like what's the end goal?
The end goal is.
I don't know a lot about this.
Sure, sure. The end goal would be that the district receives all the tax revenue that it rightfully should and that that number. So remember, I know I was ill, but I remember some discussion a couple meetings ago when we were talking about the budget and whether we had to raise taxes and all those numbers. You know, if we have to raise taxes, let's just say as a rough number, 3%, you know, that 3% is being equally applied to all properties based on their assessed value. When you could argue that there's a couple properties that are underpaying their tax bill because.
They're under-assessed.
Under-assessed. Their value of their property is not accurate based on what they paid for. It's an easy way to make that argument. And so now they'll pay their fair percentage of the three, whatever tax increase it is. They'll pay the fair piece.
Does that make sense? Thank you. I just wanted clarity of what the conversation was. Got it.
Yeah, so, I mean, and in real terms, like $100,000, you know, we're usually looking at an increase in our budget of $400,000 to $500,000 compared to now. You know, $100,000 out of $500,000. Yeah, so instead of a 3.6% raise in taxes, we might only have to do a 2.6% raise, you know.
And I think what Jeremy's saying too is that really, I mean, it's leveling. It's not, it's making it that everyone's paying their. It's equaling it out. Yeah, their assessed, current assessed value of a property.
In real estate, you know, we're required, our FOB bank, we're required to have anybody buying a home sign a form that basically is they're acknowledging that when they buy the home today, that their taxes that we're estimating, telling them what they are today, could go up. I tell my clients, they will go up. I know a lot about school district taxes. They're going up. So whatever your number is today, it better not be the max you can afford because it's going to be higher no matter what district you're in, you know, anywhere in America.
So would you have a better estimate for next month?
Yes. I'll have it all, I'll have it all calculated.
Yeah, so I mean, I think you just need to look at those numbers. You have to decide because, remember, some of these people might be your neighbors.
I thought you had already built in an assessment bump kind of every year. How does that?
So that's just changes in assessment in our, that's normal. You put in.
Which would be based on transactions, isn't it?
No, no.
No.
It's based on, hey, I got a building permit to build a pole barn. I got a building permit to put a pool in my yard. I got a building permit to add on to my house. That triggers the assessment office to come out and say, oh, your house was assessed at $200,000? Well, you added this, this, and this. Now we're going to bump it up to $250,000, which automatically makes your taxes go up.
And that's all driven through the building permit.
So the assessment, the assessment thing, the assessment thing that gets built into my budget, I call the assessment office and say, as of today, what is the entire district total assessed value? It's 591,708,422. And then next month, it could be different because these three people built or tore down. Like I remember when we first started talking about our budget, our total assessed value was, we actually took a cut in revenue because the total assessed value was less than what it was last year, which means someone raised the house. And now it's, there's that property, the building is gone, and it's just the parcel that's left. So it can happen where it goes down, but.
Okay. I thought some of that was transactional. Automatic is, you know, as you indicated, that within that transaction, then the assessment would change based upon that.
Not for transfers.
Okay.
It's really a board decision. We'll try to give you the data, and then you can decide what are the pros and cons.
Other questions? Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Still votes. Amanda.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close name, motion carries. We adjourn.